Would Logue on or what?
Okay, okay. Well, that should be interesting.
Okay.
All right, our lights are on. Is everybody ready?
I know, they're on.
Okay.
I know.
I'd like to call the Monday, July 20, 2020 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome back, Lori. Would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And can we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Hilton?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have a report on our minutes of our June 1 regular session and our work session and our July 6 work session? Councilmember Epley?
Yes, Your Honor. I've reviewed the minutes from the June 1 regular session and work session and the July 6 work session and find them to be correct and complete and move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. And this evening, we had planned on meeting at the Oakwood Community Center in a socially distanced area to allow visitors, but after Montgomery County turned red in accordance with Governor Dewine's order on mandating masks, we decided that that was probably not a good idea. So we moved our meeting back here to City Council and we are not having visitors in the council chambers. We are going to try something different tonight where we have a couple of citizens have asked to address council and we're going to do that via phone. So when we get to the visitor section, we're going to try that and we'll see how it works. And we are socially distanced. Some people have criticized me for not wearing a mask. I have a medical condition and something from my doctor saying that as long as I can remain socially distanced, I'm not required to wear a mask. So I would encourage the mask police to be a little more confident of people who can't always wear a mask. If I go to Dorothy Lane Market, I can wear a mask for about five minutes, which is all it takes me to buy my provisions, and that's what I do. So with that said, I do have a status report before we get to the visitor section. And I wanted to report this at our April meeting, but that was the first meeting that we went, you know, to our sort of emergency-type council procedures. But this was a copy of a letter that was sent to our Public Safety Director, Alan Hill, from the Kettering Police Department, and it was dated in March of 2020. On March 7, 2020, around 3:00 a.m., several Kettering Police Officers were dispatched to Sherrington Court, that's near Georgetown Apartments, and found a two-year-old child. It was discovered the child was found wandering around wearing pajamas during near-freezing temperatures in a parking lot within the apartment complex. The child was unable to communicate or tell us where she lived. Kettering Police Department officers attempted to knock on doors within the complex in an attempt to find the parents. This is a large apartment complex and it was obvious we were going to need additional officers. Our dispatch center called several other departments and two of Oakwood's officers were sent to assist us. The Oakwood officers arrived and helped us make contact at numerous apartments within the complex. I personally spoke with your officers and asked if there was anything else we needed help with besides attempting to contact as many apartments as possible. I found their assistance invaluable and we all appreciated their help. The mother of the child was eventually located thanks to the teamwork involved by all officers on scene. I want to express my thanks to both you and your department for helping us that night. The officers involved that we sent to assist Kettering were PSO Ryan Wells and PSO Jethsee Schaefer. Would you please acknowledge our thanks for them, for their work above and beyond? And then, secondly, we received another letter in April from the Centerville Police Department. And this was from Matthew Brown, the Chief of Police of Centerville. And one of his people asked that Lieutenant Joseph Levine recommended that Detective Kelsey Ballinger receive a letter of recognition. This recommendation was based on an investigation of a child pornography case in which you were instrumental towards resolving. On April 2, 2020, you advised Centerville Detective Gerspacher of an active child pornography case involving two suspects who reside in Centerville and a possible juvenile victim. After compiling information, you and Detective Gerspacher obtained a search warrant for the suspect's home located in Centerville and vehicles. You assisted officers and detectives from Kettering and Centerville Police Departments in executing the search warrant. Charges are pending upon further analysis of the numerous pieces of computer and digital evidence that were successfully obtained. The teamwork demonstrated by you and all the law enforcement personnel associated with this case was exemplary. The investigation was both thorough and expeditious, from compiling the information and obtaining the search warrant, to locating the suspects and implementing the warrant in a very timely manner. Your actions have brought credit to you and the Oakwood Police Department. I congratulate you on your professionalism, devotion to duty, and a job well done. Obviously, please relay that to Detective Ballinger. We appreciate her efforts as much as well. That concludes the status report. Does anyone else have any status reports? That concludes the status report section. So we are now going to try our visitor portion. And Lori, do we have a visitor? I feel like a talk show host or something. We're going to try this. I think we have three people who wish to address council.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and reach out to the first and put him through.
This is Mayor Duncan. Who am I speaking with?
You are speaking with Jerry Kayley.
Could you spell your last name for the record, please?
Yes, C-A-L-E-Y.
Okay, welcome. We've never done this before. You're the first person that's addressed council telephonically, so we were interested in hearing what you would like to address to council.
All right. Should I just begin then, or?
Yes, please. Yeah, if you can keep your comments to three to four minutes, that would be fine.
Mm-hmm. All right, so hi, as I already said, my name is Jerry Kayley, and I've lived in Oakwood for as long as I can remember. I grew up here, went to school here, from kindergarten all the way through to my high school graduation, everything from the football, the theater, the marching band, and rock team during my time here. But through it all, I saw barely any black students, teachers, or community members. I don't believe Oakwood has been consciously racist for a long time, but the murder of George Floyd has opened a lot of eyes, my own included, to the racism that still exists within our nation, racism that often goes unnoticed in this society, who is supposedly now race neutral or colorblind. And Oakwood is not immune to those problems. We are a suburb of a highly segregated city, a city that was the last in Ohio to achieve racial unitary status. And even if there are no longer rules outright impeding people of color from moving here, we should look into why Oakwood stays so dominantly white. It may be expensive to move here, but we offer arguably the best education system in the Dayton area and a safe, caring community. So why does it stay so white? Some of those causes may be outside our control. Racism affects every part of our lives due to some of the lingering effects of past racism in our nation and the racism that still is present today, even if it often goes unnoticed. However, there are things that we can control, with a good example being how we police our community. I've always had a great relationship with our police department. Actually, Chief Allen, I just ran into you today when I walked into the meeting by accident. I'm actually the person who walked in earlier. But one of the speakers of the Black Lives Matter rally spoke of a very different experience. She spoke of how she fears about being pulled over in Oakwood for out of traffic stop just because of the color of her skin. And that story is supported by the data of the ABLE report that you did at Uofol. I'll be honest, I have not studied it well, but I really hope that the city took a long, hard look at the issues it presented. A city as modest as Oakwood is an ideal breeding ground for implicit biases that could affect how the police force and force the law. And that bias can affect how you interact with the world and the people within it, often without you ever noticing it. I say this all because I love Oakwood. I really do. I know how incredible and supportive this community can be, and I want that support to be open to everyone. But I and other alumni I've talked to have reservations about whether we want to return and raise our kids in a city that is so dominantly white. In the increasingly diverse country world, it's important that children grow up with people of different experiences and races. And I know I never saw that when I grew up here. And I've had to work through the implicit biases that develop when you grow up only seeing white people. It's difficult for students to become, quote, "the ethical decision-makers" that Oakwood schools strive to develop when we study and live in a city that does not reflect the diversity of the modern world in which we will live in. The most important thing I'll say tonight is just to please, please take racism in Oakwood seriously. I've heard you guys recently set up a task force, and that is great. I really encourage the members of that task force to take their jobs seriously and actively speak out and look for racism and take a hard look at our city. And I've tried to keep my words tight, to kind of try to keep them calm, but this is really a big issue that we need to look into. And I'll be honest, I'm not entirely sure where to start. But we need to educate ourselves in the spirit of our proud Oakwood schools by reading books, working with the experts, and listening to black voices. I am an Oakwood resident and a voice you likely hear most, but I'm not the one who should be leading this conversation. Experts and the people who feel ostracized in this city will help us solve this issue as they are the ones who feel the impact of it. Thank you, and go Jacks.
Thank you, Mr. Kayley. We appreciate your comments. And do we have the next person that wants to address council, or do you have to dial them in?
I'm dialing now.
Okay. Thank you again for being the first person to dial in to us telephonically. I should hang up now?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
I hung up, correct? This is Mayor Duncan. Who am I speaking with?
Hi, Mayor Duncan. This is Rebecca Gentry.
Welcome. You are the second person to address City Council telephonically. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I was calling tonight actually with similar concerns to Joey. I graduated from Oakwood in 2019. I've lived here almost my entire life. I've gone to the Oakwood schools since kindergarten. And when I went to college out of state, in the Twin Cities actually, which is where George Floyd was murdered, I remember marveling at how diverse my new school was. I felt like, I don't know, I felt like I was in another world. But I remember when I was running for student government, some of my other students who were running spoke to how McAllister needs to improve its diversity because only 3% of our students were black. And that just blew my mind because I thought it was so much more diverse than anything I had ever seen. And that's when it really sank in that Oakwood has skewed my perceptions of what inclusivity really looks like. I'm calling tonight not to accuse anybody of being racist or of intentionally keeping people of color out of our community, but we have inherited a town that was built on racism. We've inherited a town that had racist deeds, racist provisions in housing deeds. And we're still seeing the effects of that today. So if we continue to turn a blind eye to the fact that Oakwood is 95% white and that that's no accident, then we're complicit in perpetuating racial segregation. Personally, I am most interested in looking at housing segregation and why it's so difficult for people of color to become homeowners in Oakwood or even to rent Oakwood properties. I'm not entirely sure what all the solutions are, but I want our community to start talking about these things and looking into things like more rental options, perhaps changing zoning rules so that it's easier to build apartment-style housing in Oakwood. And if that doesn't work, if we really cannot welcome more people into our community that are not white, then I think we should look into expanding the Oakwood schools so that people who don't live within Oakwood proper can attend the Oakwood schools. Because a lot of this comes down to education, but even more of it comes down to community. I want our community to be welcoming and to be inclusive and frankly, like Joey said, I don't want to come back and raise my kids here if they're going to be surrounded by other white people because that's not the world that we live in and that shouldn't be the world that we live in. And we shouldn't be okay with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a question, Rebecca?
Sure, thanks.
How did the sound come over when Joey was speaking? Were you able to hear that halfway decent on your TV or internet?
Uh, yes, I was.
Okay, well, that's good because this is the first time we've ever tried this, so hopefully we'll be able to see, you know, humans in council chambers at our next meeting in September. So thank you again for your comments. We appreciate them. And do we have one more person? Okay, thank you, Rebecca, for your comments and good luck in school. This is Mayor Duncan. With whom am I speaking?
Um, hi, my name is Coco Zhang and I am, well, I've lived in Oakwood since I was about 12 or 11, and I recently graduated, just last year. I am following Rebecca and Joey in talking about just kind of some of the issues that have emerged and that I have wanted to address for a very long time. So basically, I can count on the number of people of color in my graduating class on two hands. Black students, a single finger. Teachers of color, none whatsoever. Now, of course, this doesn't mean that the precise quality of the school is directly linked to how many diversity points, as some would like to call them, we hit, but as one of the few students of color who have graduated over the years, I can see and have personally experienced the effects that Oakwood's ongoing overwhelming whiteness have rendered onto the student body. I can give you the numbers. The numbers are definitely out there, but it seems that numbers have fallen on deaf ears. My mother came to this council in vain trying to get all of you to acknowledge the report that concluded black people are discriminated against by Oakwood police. So maybe I can try a different route today as someone who grew up in Oakwood and in its schools, as someone who has experienced firsthand what a wonderful thing the Oakwood community can be, but also what an ugly thing it can be. Like I said, I came to Oakwood in the sixth grade, and at that young age, tact isn't exactly one's forte. I remember once when we were lining up, what seemed like everyone around me started pulling their eyes back in some attempts to mimic what they thought my eyes appeared to them. Once we got older, this kind of blatant insensitivity declined, but even then, there were still a lot of instances. In my sophomore year, I sat in the back of my physics class. There were two upperclassmen boys that thought it would be the most hilarious thing in the world to talk at me in Chinese accents all year. I didn't know how to defend myself then. It was only because a teacher noticed what was going on that he managed to put an end to it. I also had to watch my other teachers, one of my other teachers, put on pretty awful Japanese accents during class. So I kind of, I can get that you might just brush these off as singular incidents perpetrated by individual, quote-unquote, "bad apples," but my stories aren't the only ones. I have graduated with, but I still have a younger sister in Oakwood schools. She has also come to me with stories of how her classmates deride her Asian-ness, her other-ness. Her classmate was in fact removed from Oakwood schools after enduring months of bullying fueled by the rise of COVID-19, which the administration essentially ignored. From the isolated incidents, we can piece together a bigger picture. The number of people of color in our schools and community is extraordinarily small, and of those, we aren't exactly being treated well either. I speak on discrimination I have personally experienced, that is Asian discrimination, but that only accounts for a small subset of everything that goes on. You'll hear more, you've heard more about it from my friends who've spoken before on systemic housing issues that keep black and brown people from our community as well. The issue doesn't start with school and doesn't end with it either, but please, we have to admit that something must change. I went off to college in Los Angeles, a place that is radically different from Oakwood. Coming back, our failures are darker than ever before against the backdrop of a country with growing civil unrest over these very issues. I've been taught a very sanitized and one-sided version of our history, and the lack of diversity in our schools promotes a homogenous culture that isn't comfortable and isn't equipped to learn about different cultures and backgrounds. Oakwood's status as the dome in my eyes is more of a weakness than a strength. Oakwood has a strong sense of community and highly intelligent students, yes, but we rarely look outside our own community to see what good we can do with these gifts. There is a culture of staying under the dome and remaining insular, which is indicative of Oakwood's history as a redlined, like racially segregated town. These things are well-known to the communities around us, and it's an unfortunate fact that outside of Oakwood, we're known for a lot more than just our education system. Our teachers are 99% white. Our school administration is entirely white. Our Board of Education members are all white as well. While I by no means want to question their competency and their ability to do their jobs, I invite Oakwood City Schools to take a closer look at their hiring practice. If the students of color feel that the schools are not a friendly environment towards them, I'm willing to bet that neither do the faculty. I invite Oakwood City Schools to carefully and genuinely examine the culture they foster beyond some vanity diversity project that no one cares about. These students have a good sense for authenticity, can just ask anyone who's sat through a homeroom presentation after a homeroom presentation. It's not going to be easy and it's going to take genuine effort, but it must be done in order to promote Oakwood to the standards it holds itself to. I agree with my friends that housing is the foremost problem. Without new families coming to Oakwood, the schools themselves have no real hope of change. I bring back up like the regulations against apartment buildings, which Oakwood residents so feared would bring in the, quote-unquote, "wrong" sort of people. I raise you this. If we are so proud of the Oakwood schools but then refuse others the ability to take part in it out of the fear that it would somehow be to lower quality, then I teach you to question the true efficacy of our school system. If we cannot promote any student to their fullest potential, then I ask you, is it really the school system that works, or is it just that you've excluded everyone who doesn't have the money to support their own education at home and then just called it a job well done? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, and City Council is painfully aware of the controversy we had regarding apartments back several years ago. I will say though, however, approximately 28% of the housing units in Oakwood, I believe, are apartments, either two families, four families. We don't have as many apartments like we've just done down at Old River in terms of, you know, large complexes, just due to the small footprint of our 2.2 square mile city. But Coco, I appreciate your comments. And again, could you hear the other two people pretty well as you were watching?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you and good luck with your schooling as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Bye. Okay, is that the end of our visitor portion? Well, what do you guys think? That was interesting. It's sort of better to see their face and their facial expressions, but we appreciate all of their comments. That will then conclude our visitor section, so we'll now go to legislation. And Mr. Stevens has an ordinance. Follow-up ordinance, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance amending Section 375.10, shared mobility devices of the Oakwood Traffic Code to make permanent a ban on the use of shared mobility devices, including the placement or operation thereof in any public right-of-way or on public property, and offering the same for use anywhere in the city. This is the second reading of an ordinance to ban the use of, quote, "dockless electric scooters and bicycles in city rights of way and on public property." Dockless electric scooters and bicycles, which are available to be rented on demand from unstaffed locations, arrived in many cities suddenly and unexpectedly and proliferated rapidly. Some of the most visible examples include spin, bird, and lime scooters, among others. These shared mobility devices are largely unregulated. In cities, they are available; they are frequently abandoned by users wherever they happen to stop, in streets, sidewalks, doorways, and other public places. In addition, due to the spontaneous nature of these rentals and their appeal to young people, shared mobility devices are nearly always operated by users, often minors, without helmets. Council initiated moratorium legislation last year, hoping the General Assembly would regulate these devices in the interim, but that has not happened. Since the state has not acted to clarify the law on these scooters, this ordinance will make our local ban permanent. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion or comments or questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then I believe you have an additional ordinance, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, an ordinance to itemize and levy special assessments for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto in the city of Oakwood, Ohio. This ordinance is the fourth and final legislative step of our 2019 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. It itemizes sidewalk repair costs that have not already been paid directly by affected homeowners and authorizes these costs to be assessed by the Montgomery County Auditor. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And I believe that Vice Mayor Byington has a resolution.
Sure, Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the Building Commissioner to grant reasonable extensions of zoning certificates during the COVID-19 pandemic. Under our zoning code, permits for construction and remodeling projects are valid for six months but lapse if construction is not started in that time. Normally, this is not a problem, but in the current pandemic situation, some contractors are experiencing material shortages and/or labor issues that are causing unpreventable delays. Council does not want residents to be unfairly impacted by the circumstances that are beyond their control. Resolution that I'm introducing will allow the Director of Properties, who also serves as our Building Commissioner, to grant extensions of up to six months in these situations. This is a temporary grant of authority that will expire one year from now. I move that council adopt this resolution this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then Vice Mayor Byington has another resolution regarding some money.
Yes, this is a resolution pursuant to Ohio Senate Bill 310 affirming that coronavirus aid money received under the Federal CARES Act will be used for authorized expenditures only. This is the first of three pieces of legislation that I'm introducing this evening that relates to relief funding under the Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, which is also known as the CARES Act. The CARES Act makes certain money available to states for reimbursement of governmental expenses incurred in mitigating and responding to the coronavirus pandemic. It is up to each state to determine how that money will be allocated. The Ohio General Assembly recently adopted Senate Bill 310, which established a process for distributing these funds to counties where they can be further distributed to local governments, including the city of Oakwood. For Oakwood to receive the money for which it is eligible, SB 310 requires us to pass a resolution affirming that we will only use the funds to cover costs that are allowable under the CARES Act. That is the resolution, and I move that we accept it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll? Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Yes.
And so after that ordinance has been approved, you have an ordinance now, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, a couple more here. It's an ordinance to create a fund within the fiscal records of the city to be known as the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund and to declare an emergency. This is the second piece of the CARES Act legislation for this evening. This ordinance will establish a new fund in the city's financial record known as the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund. We are required to create this separate fund to receive federal CARES Act money so that we can separately track and account for COVID-related expenditures and properly report them as required under the act. I'm introducing this as an emergency measure so that it can take effect as soon as possible before we receive this funding. Motion I make is I move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Because it's an emergency, I believe that would require unanimous vote of council. So Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Yes.
And you now have yet another ordinance.
The final ordinance in this package. This is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2020 Original Appropriation Ordinance, Number 4897, and supplemental appropriation ordinance, Number 4912, to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of $128,661.73 to be expended from the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund to cover costs consistent with the requirement of the Section 5001 of the CARES Act for the city of Oakwood, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020. This is the third and final piece of CARES Act legislation tonight. The city of Oakwood is eligible to receive up to $128,661.73 in CARES Act funding, and council is required to adopt a supplemental appropriation ordinance in order to use that money. Under Section 3.04 of the city charter, this appropriation ordinance will take effect immediately. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? For the city manager, is there a requirement, a time limit in which we have to spend this money, or is that still unclear at this point?
I believe it's through the end of the year.
Through the end of the calendar year?
Yeah, I think that's correct, Mayor. Through the end of the year, unless it's extended.
So we'll keep track of what we're spending these things on and then have a true-up with the federal government or state government?
Correct.
All right. I have no other questions or comments, so hearing no additional questions. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Yes.
And then finally, Mr. Stevens has his most favorite resolution of the entire season.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. A resolution to authorize and direct the Director of Finance to certify certain delinquent charges for cutting noxious weeds to the county auditor for collection. Each year, the city incurs costs for mowing overgrown yards when owners do not take care of their property. The city bills property owners for those costs, and most of them pay. For those who do not pay, this is our annual resolution to certify the cost to the county auditor so they can be added to the tax bill for each property. This 2020 certification includes 14 properties at a total dollar amount of $3,126.72. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Yes.
And that concludes our legislation for this evening. We now have a staff report from our Public Safety Director, Chief Allen Hill, a very timely report, and we're looking forward to hearing it from you. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. I think before I begin tonight, I'd just like to say a couple of words. Obviously, since May 25, it's been a very trying time in our country, especially with police citizen relations, with all the events that are going around in the country, that are continuing to go around the country today. And I just want to take a moment to address that. On June 11, I issued a public statement regarding the tragic events that led to the death of Mr. George Floyd. That statement can be found on the city's website. What happened to Mr. Floyd on May 25 was shocking and caused heartbreak and anger to millions of Americans across this great country. That officer's actions and those who stood by and watched violated the oath of more than 750,000 men and women who dedicate their lives daily to serve their communities. To say the members of the law enforcement profession nationwide are now outraged by what occurred in Minneapolis is an understatement. The actions of those officers, single-handedly erodes the trust of our profession in communities across this country, including ours. I want to be clear to everybody who's listening at home: in no way, shape, or form are the actions demonstrated by those Minneapolis officers on May 25 indicative of the character of the men and women of the Oakwood Public Safety Department and our commitment to protecting and serving this wonderful community. The actions of those Minneapolis officers should not and cannot diminish the relationships that we, members of the Safety Department, have built within this community for decades. I'm committed, and I stand ready, to join my fellow law enforcement executives in this critically important quest to restore the faith in policing, to restore the faith in the policing profession across this nation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Staff report. Switching gears here a little bit, tonight I'm going to just update you on a significant capital improvement that we acquired earlier in the year, personnel changes. Then I'm going to talk a little bit about our department operations, our recruitment. If you guys remember, in the fall, we had a resident address council and talk a little bit about our recruitment process, where we obtain new hires from. Talk about use of force. Obviously, it's a daily topic, the Ohio Collaborative Process, and last, the 2020 Citizens Police Academy. That being said, earlier this year in March, the Safety Department obtained a complete replacement, a comprehensive replacement of our extrication tools and our vehicle stabilization equipment. Outside of the life-pack units that we carry on the medic, you could argue that this is probably one of the single most valuable life-safety pieces of equipment we have. Because if you have somebody entrapped in a vehicle, it is these tools here that are commonly referred to as the jaws of life are what's going to safely remove that person from the vehicle. Our old tools were about 20 years old. Over that time, the construction and the materials comprised within the metals of vehicles have significantly changed. And a common phrase that you hear is ultra-high-strength steel. These tools were very much needed because the tools that we had, that we replaced, were not capable of cutting that kind of steel. I read an article about a year ago, and I believe your average Honda Accord is now made up of almost 40% ultra-high-strength steel. You're not even getting into the BMWs, the Mercedes, the Teslas, and some of these higher-end European cars that are all high-ultra-strength steel. So this was a very much-needed upgrade for us. At the same time, we replaced our vehicle stabilization equipment, and this is a 20-year capital expenditure. So although they are, it is a significant investment. They will be around for a long time. Personnel changes. I know Lieutenant Yount was here a couple times in council chambers where we acknowledged his career, but on April 2, Lieutenant Yount did retire with over 30 years of service to the city of Oakwood. At the time of his retirement, he was the longest-tenured public safety officer, working for five different chiefs. Just a note there, there's only been seven chiefs since the 1950s, and he saw two generations of public safety officers retire. He had a very long and successful, rewarding career here in the city of Oakwood, did quite a bit, and we all wish Jeff well in his retirement. He's currently in our thoughts right now, both him and his son, Public Safety Officer, Jeff Yount Jr. Jeff lost his mom a couple days ago unexpectedly, and so Yount Sr.'s in our thoughts right now. So Jeff, if you're listening, we're thinking about you. Hit-and-run accident. You know, one of the things that we pride ourselves on our department for years is, regardless of the nature of the complaint, the significance of the complaint, we treat all incidents the same in Oakwood. We will investigate anything and everything as thoroughly as we can to bring it to a conclusion. And this is just a recent example that I thought would be important to highlight. What you're seeing here is some trees that were demolished in a hit-and-run accident on Schroyer and Green Mount on July 6. The next morning, Captain Jones and Public Safety Officer Jack Harrison went to the accident scene to follow up. Significant damage to the trees also results to significant damage to a vehicle. So they followed the evidence. They followed pavement markings southbound on Schroyer, and while doing so, they came across the witness who indicated that they observed a white BMW with a flat tire, hence the pavement markings grinding the rims on the pavement. So Captain Jones and Officer Harrison continued to follow the pavement markings and located a fresh oil spill with diamond drive over it some eight blocks away. Going off his gut instinct, Captain Jones made contact with a resident in the area and located the person responsible for the hit-and-run. This is just another highlight that the Safety Department investigates all complaints received, regardless of how minor the incident. They did a great job in solving this case and bringing it to a resolution. You know, I don't want to say anything about other jurisdictions, but not everybody, due to call volume, resources, or just frankly, the seriousness of the complaint, that would probably take the time, energy, and effort to go out and investigate and bring to a conclusion a hit-and-run accident involving trees. So with that being said, I just thought it would be nice to just illustrate, highlight this particular incident, and to acknowledge Captain Jones, Officer Harrison, and Officer Wells for their job on this. So I appreciate your efforts. Mission statement. I'm going to talk a little bit about our department operations, who we are a little bit. You know, there's a lot of comments that have been made publicly about who we are as individuals, what comprises us, how we're made up as an organization. And we have a mission. And our mission is to work in partnership with all citizens to enhance the quality of life by providing superior police, fire, and EMS services. You know, we've talked about it before, but not everybody truly understands what we do as an organization. We are the sole public consolidated public safety department in the state of Ohio. I know you guys are aware, but not everybody at home is. Nobody operates in the state of Ohio the way we do, with consolidated police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. And we pride ourselves on providing quality service in all three. We have three core values: integrity. We're committed to the integrity by upholding community trust. We're dedicated through our dedication, through our loyalty to the community, and finally respect: treating people, treating all people with dignity and in an unbiased manner. You know, our mission, vision, and values was not something that was created last September after the Abel Report was introduced, or on May 26 after the George Floyd incident. Our mission, vision, and values have been around for over a decade. This is who we are as individuals. This is our commitment to the citizens in the community in which we serve. Our principles of operation: first and foremost, to protect the life and property of all citizens and anybody passing through our community; to promote the promotion of a safe and secure environment; and again, to provide superior police, fire, and EMS services. Officer recruitment. To get hired as a public safety officer, what are the requirements? Well, you need to be a U.S. citizen, 21 years of age, possess a valid driver's license, and we use a lateral entry hiring process. What does that mean? It means you need to be certified full-time, certified in one of the three disciplines. So at the time of hire, you already have to be a certified police officer, you have to be a certified career firefighter, and/or you have to be a certified paramedic. On top of that, you've had to successfully complete 12 months of full-time service and currently be employed as a full-time police officer, career firefighter, or paramedic. So in other words, to get hired at Oakwood, you already have to be certified in one of the three disciplines. You have to currently be working full-time, and you have to possess at least 12 months of full-time experience. If you look over the last decade, our average new hire has about six and a half years of experience. And most recently, we hired Officer Chris Sloan from Mason, who actually had 17 years of experience. So, you know, but six and a half is about the average. The officer selection process. It starts with the completion of a 50-plus-page application packet. You have to complete two oral board interviews, a comprehensive character background investigation. You have to complete and successfully pass two-truth verification tests. There's been a lot of talk about psychological exams in the police hiring process across the nation. The Oakwood Public Safety Department in the city of Oakwood has used psychological exams for decades here within the city, within our hiring process. And ultimately, you have to complete a medical exam. Where do we attract candidates from? The answer's simple: all over the region. We're not continually hiring individuals from the same departments. Here's just a list in the last 10 years where some of the talent we have in our department today has come from: Amberly Village, Beaver Creek Fire Department, Bell Brook Fire Department, Dayton Police and Fire Departments, Fairborn, Kettering Fire Department, Kettering Police Department, Mason Police Department, the Miami Valley Fire District, the Miami'sburg Police Department, the Middletown Fire Department, the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, the Moraine Police Department, the Ohio State Highway Patrol, and the Riverside Police Department. So we're attracting candidates from all over the Miami Valley region each and every time that we put out an advertisement for hire. We're a committed equal opportunity employer, and we do our best to attract candidates of all races and genders from all over the region. Use of force. I think almost daily you could turn on a news channel and find some type of conversation with regards to police and use of force. Here in the city of Oakwood, we've had a culture of accountability with regards to use of force for years. The Oakwood Public Safety Department has a comprehensive use-of-force policy covering all facets of the application of force, the documentation of use-of-force incidents, and the administrative review of use-of-force incidents. Our use-of-force numbers. In 2016, as a department, we had six incidences of use of force. In 2017, we had six incidents as well. In 2018, we had three incidences of use of force. In 2019, we had three. And year-to-date, in 2020, we have not had to use force at all. It should be noted, during this same time period, the Public Safety Department has made over 1,000 arrests and has conducted in excess of 15,000 traffic stops. That's 16,000 just in these two categories alone, over 1,000 arrests and 15,000 traffic stops. That's 16,000 potential adversarial encounters that our officers have had with members of the community and across the region that's resulted in 18 use-of-force incidents. The chances of us using force in just these two incidences alone, where we would have to use force on any individual, is 1/1,000th of 1%. We've had, we've been approached by several, I'm not just saying Oakwood citizens, citizens of the region, when we're out engaged in law enforcement actions in the community where somebody stops and says, "I just want to make sure that person is okay. I want to make sure you're doing everything you should be doing." Well, I hope people are listening to these numbers. We've had 16,000 potential adversarial encounters that resulted in 18 use-of-force incidents. I'm going to talk about de-escalation and de-escalation training and professionalism. 1/1,000th of 1%. So my response to that question is, is when have we ever given anybody a reason that somebody would not be okay when they're in the care of our custody? Following the tragic death of George Floyd, much discussion has occurred locally, statewide, and nationally with regards to use-of-force policies. One of the number-one things that was talked about for a while was the Eight That Can't Wait police reform. Research showed that more restrictive use-of-force policies can reduce killings by police and save lives. This is the campaign that said, "Tell your cities to adopt all eight of..." This is the campaign that said, "Tell your cities to adopt all eight of these policies." And they're, and when you, they break down statistically, percentage-wise, each of the eight, and when you add them all together, there was a reduction in deaths of suspects by 72% on this particular study if the eight of these individual things were incorporated into a use-of-force policy. I'm going to go through them in order here. Bans of chokeholds. For everybody out there, here's the Oakwood Public Safety Department for counsel, here's our, here's our policy with regards to carotid control holds. "The proper application of a carotid control hold may be effective in restraining a violent or combative individual. However, due to the potential for injury, the Safety Department prohibits, prohibits officers from using such holds or similar control techniques as a routine defensive control tactic. The use of a carotid control hold by officers is only authorized when it is reasonably necessary to prevent the death or serious physical harm." I'm sure somebody out there is asking the question, "Have we ever had to apply such or a similar hold in a use-of-force situation?" And the answer is yes. The last time was in 2008, when we were involved in a foot pursuit with a burglary suspect that we caught coming out of somebody's front door of their house. And so in 2008 was the last time that this hold was applied. It's not used as a routine defensive control tactic, and it can only be used when it is necessary, necessary to prevent death or serious physical harm. The follow-up to that: any individual who has had a carotid neck hold applied regardless of whether he or she was rendered unconscious shall be promptly examined by the on-duty paramedic or other qualified person. The officer shall inform any person receiving custody of that individual that such hold has been placed on them, whether that individual has lost consciousness or not. And the final component of that is really two components. If an officer would ever apply such hold, they're required to notify the on-duty supervisor that such hold was placed on an individual or attempted to be placed on an individual, and they're required to document it via a use-of-force report and a normal incident report. That's for chokeholds. De-escalation: de-escalation and de-escalation training is nothing new to the Oakwood Public Safety Department. Over the past several years, the Safety Department has provided periodic de-escalation trainings through various in-service trainings. Most recently, public safety officers completed law enforcement de-escalation trainings both last month in June and July of 2020, and according to the governor's press conference a few weeks back on this particular issue, it looks like by the end of the year, there's going to be six more hours of training coming on this topic. But like I said, for us, I started law enforcement in 1997, and I believe I attended my first de-escalation training in 1999, and I've been periodically receiving training on this topic for the last 20-plus years. You know, I know a lot of people have questions about, "Well, training isn't enough. How do you practice it? How do you continue to get proficient in it?" The answer is, is every day. We're using de-escalation and de-escalation tactics every day, on every traffic stop we make, on citizen encounters. And I'll give you a couple examples for me. The night of June 11th, the night of the event, there were some vehicles, we had between, on chance, between Schaefer and Delwood, or Delwood and Spirea was closed, and we were using that as a staging location on the night of the rally. And after the rally was over, or the event was over, several officers were leaving from another jurisdiction, and they had their cruisers parked in the angled parking spots right there along the stadium. And as I walked down to move the barricades, because the road closed, was, sign was in the middle of the road, I passed a group of juveniles. Four or five of them, a couple of them I recognized in this, around the city, so I'm going to assume they're Oakwood residents, and other ones, other ones I did not. And of course, as I walked by, I acknowledged, I said hello to them, they all immediately looked away, didn't respond back. So in law enforcement, that's our first cue. I'm walking down the street, I just say hi, you won't even look or respond back. So as I walk back, I know they're behind me, so I pay, I'm paying attention to what they're doing. I removed the barricade from the roadway, and all of a sudden, they're now on the sidewalk riding, walking right past me, and as they start walk right past me, they start with the "here, piggy, 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 I smell bacon, oink, oink, oink" comments, and all they're trying to do is elicit a response to me, from me. And I realized that, so when we talk about de-escalation, there's two ways I could approach this. There is no doubt in the manner in which they were speaking to me, if I wanted to have a confrontation, they were willing and ready to have a confrontation. So how did I respond? I pulled out my phone, probably hit ESPN app, looked up whatever was going on in sports, and once they realized they weren't going to get that response, they made a couple comments, and then they continued, and they walked off. That's de-escalation. Two weeks ago, I took a phone call from a citizen who was very upset the fact that the Amazon delivery driver was parked facing the wrong way on the road. We're all upset about that, and we need to get him parked in the right way. But let's just say, the first 30 seconds of that conversation was not very pleasant on the receiving end, and I was the receiving end. Once again, if I wanted an argument with that individual, I could have immediately started an argument. But it goes back to our de-escalation, our de-escalation training that we, that we are practicing every single day on a traffic stop. Our officers responded to an incident today at around noon. It was the exact same thing. If they wanted an argument, probably if they wanted to use of force, the opportunity was there. But they used the training, the professionalism, and the makeup of their character as the individual to, as an officer, to diffuse the situation that resulted in no incident. So when we talk about de-escalation and de-escalation training as it relates to the members of our department, it's every single day. Every single day, we face an encounter that if we're not using these trained techniques, we don't end up with 18 uses of forces and 16,000 adversarial encounters. So that's, you know, it's all the time that we're engaged in de-escalation-type techniques. Required warnings before shooting was the third one of an eight, of the eight. There is no legal requirement to do so, to provide a warning before shooting. The courts have recognized that law enforcement encounters are fast-evolving and rapidly-changing dynamic situations, and a warning may not always be feasible. Quick example is if you walk up on a traffic stop, and the person who's driving the vehicle or a passenger vehicle has a gun pointed at the officer, and as soon as they become in, come in view, they pull the trigger. It's not feasible to put something in place that requires an officer, when they're being actively shot at, to give a warning before they're required, before they can return fire and protect their own life or potentially the life of somebody else. With that, the fourth one is exhaust all alternatives before shooting. Anytime an officer is involved in deploying their firearm in the line of duty, it's to defend their life for somebody else. It's a deadly force situation. It's the highest level of force that we can use. Deadly force can only be used in two, two specific areas. An officer may use deadly force to protect himself or others from what he or she reasonably believes would be an intimate threat of death or serious bodily injury. Or, an officer may use deadly force to stop a fleeing subject when the officer has probable cause to believe that person has committed, attends to commit, a felony involving the infliction or threatened infliction of serious bodily injury or death, and the officer reasonably believes that there's an intimate risk of serious bodily injury or death to another person. Under this situation, where we are going after a fleeing subject, a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where and when feasible. So we do have a provision with, with regards to the second application of deadly, justification of deadly force, that we will give a warning to a fleeing subject if, where and when feasible. So exhaust all alternatives. All alternatives are exhausted before an officer deploys their firearm in the line of duty, because these are the only two justifiable incidents where an officer has the authority to use deadly force. Duty to Intervene: a lot of conversation about duty to intervene. "Any officer present or observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond to which is objectively reasonable under the situation, when in a position to do so, shall intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force." You know, there's a lot of talk about not only that officer up in Minnesota, but the three officers that stand, that stood around for the nine minutes and watched that horrific incident. And I've, I've been personally asked questions by the community, by members of the community, is do we have a policy in place that prohibits, or that would require, an officer to intercede and act if they would see something like that? And the answer is, is absolutely we do. Any officer who observes another employee using force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to a supervisor, and they should stop the force. It is in our use-of-force policy and has been in for years. Ban Shooting At and From Moving Vehicles: the Oakwood Public Safety Department prohibits the discharging of a firearm at or from a moving motor vehicle unless the officer reasonably believes that such action is in defense of human life. Once again, it is banned with the exception if the officer has, has to defend his life or somebody else's. Use of Force Continuum: the, one of the recommendations is, is that law enforcement agencies follow a use-of-force continuum, a force-on-force continuum, or something of that nature. The Safety Department follows the action-response-use-of-force continuum, and officers shall use the continuum as a guideline whenever force is used. And here's actually a copy of that policy, or that continuum, that starts with mere officer presence and goes all the way up to deadly force, and it's broken down into the individual's actions or the, in comparison to the officer's response. So it specifically says, "If a, if a subject is pulling away from the officer, refusing to move, dead weight, what kind of officer's responses are reasonable? Strike muscle groups, takedowns, joint manipulations, pressure points." It's laid out within this action-response continuum. There is some officer-subject factors such as age, size, skill level, relative strength, five-foot-ten officer, female officer weighing 105 pounds, six-foot-six, 280-pound male. Would that female officer have the ability to escalate their use of force based on certain subject factors? The answer is yes. Comprehensive Reporting: reporting a use of force. "Any use of force by a member of this department shall be documented promptly, completely, and accurately. In addition to completing an alert report, which is our basic incident reporting, you also have to complete a use-of-deadly-force, physical-force report." So here in the city of Oakwood, any and all applications of use of force have to be promptly documented, completed, and submitted to their supervisor. The supervisor's responsibility, and I'm not going to read this word for word, supervisor has a lot of responsibility, from as far as responding to the scene, obtaining the facts, and ensuring that injured parties are examined and treated, to obtain witness statements, to conduct interviews if necessary, and ultimately, provide a memorandum of the subject's statement if one is obtained to go with the original report. Once that medical assistant, or medical assessment has been completed, take any appropriate photographs for evidence, identify witnesses. But ultimately, what it comes down to is, in addition to all of this, they need to review all and approve all related reports that have been submitted by all officers, and they need to notify the on-call command staff member, which would be myself or one of the two captains, if the application of force results in an individual being hospitalized. So quick scenario, we're involved in a situation that results in a use of force where we take down a subject, and they hit their head on the concrete. The on-duty paramedic gets on there and recommends that he be transported to the hospital to be evaluated. In addition to the use-of-force report that's being completed by the officer, and the supervisor's reviewing that report and gathering additional information, a command staff member is also being notified immediately at that time of what had occurred as well. The supervisor shall initiate steps to begin an internal investigation if it is reasonable to believe that the application of force by the officer was not within policy. The investigation or complaint form will then be directed to myself for further investigation. So the, so the reviewing supervisor has the obligation that if they're reviewing a report and the justification of force was not within policy, to take the next step and initiate an investigation or a complaint form related to that incident. With regards to the administrative review, after the on-duty supervisor reviews the report, subsequently, it is forwarded to the operations captain, who reviews the report as well. Part of the reason that he's reviewing the report for compliance within policy, and once the operations captain reviews the report, it's automatically forwarded to me for final review as well. So with regards to our review policy, we have the initial on-duty supervisor reviewing the report, we have the operations captain reviewing the report, and myself. These are, all three supervisory reviews are conducted on all use of forces. It's not only if it requires hospitalization or anything. A simple armbar takedown that results in a handcuffing of a subject that has a use-of-force report completed would go through these same steps. And then ultimately, at the end of the year, the operations captain prepares a use-of-force report regarding the incidents, and we look for any trends in use of force by members, training needs, equipment needs, policy revisions, things of that nature. You know, a lot has come out with regards to the officer up in Minnesota and the number of use of forces he had over a specified period of time, whether you want to look at it from a one-year, two-year, five-year area, and they talk about our officers and monitoring our officers. How do you know your officers aren't using too much force and, or using force too many times? As I shared our numbers, we had 18 uses of force over four years. We had an officer within our department that had nine uses of forces in one year. They're going to stand out, because they have 50% of a four-year average by themselves in one year. So for us, with regards to application of force involving suspects we encounter, or subjects we encounter, I should say, is, we keep a close eye, because of, we're fortunate. We have very low use-of-force numbers, and like I said, I think it's to the professionalism, it goes to the character of the officers, their training, their background, to handle potentially violent situations with individuals that we encounter, and we're able to use this as analysis. And, you know, so we have a use-of-force reporting requirement, we have a three-step supervisory review process, and then ultimately, annually, we're going through an overall use-of-force analysis to look for policy failures, training needs, equipment needs, or identify any trends within an individual or individuals, meaning we have somebodies whose use-of-force numbers are inconsistent with the rest of the department. Any questions on those eight things? On the eight-can't-wait police reform?
Any questions for Chief? Okay.
I'm going to switch gears real quick and talk about the Ohio Collaborative. I could probably talk for two hours alone about the collaborative and the collaborative process, so to streamline it for everybody at home, I put the website on this slide if you have more interest in learning about what the Ohio Collaborative process and the Community Police Advisory Board. It was established in 2014 as the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board. It was created to oversee implementation of recommendations for statewide policing standards in a variety of areas. Although voluntary, the Ohio Collaborative certification process provides for an independent review of a police agency to demonstrate transparency, modern methods and standards, and open critique and feedback from a and open critique and feedback from assessors. There's an assessor assigned to our organization that essentially comes in in the specific areas, and I'll talk about them here in a second, that they are reviewing, where they provide critique and feedback on whether or not we are going to show or demonstrate compliance with the state standard or not. In 2016, the Oakwood Safety Department received its initial certification for use of force and recruitment hire standard, hiring standards, and that was Group One standards. At that time in 2016, these were the only two standards in which you could demonstrate compliance. And on December 14th, we received our final certification. Once you obtain your certification, you are required to be recertified every three years where you have to show compliance documents. So in March, in the spring of 2020, they got a little bit behind due to everything going on with COVID, but we demonstrated and were recertified in Group One standards with recruiting and hiring and use of force. Subsequently, in 17 and 18 and 19, there's been additional standards that have been implemented. And we also received certification in Group Two standards, which is community engagement and telecommunicator training, dispatch training, and then Group Three standards, which is bias-based policing and investigation of employee misconduct. So we currently, there are three groups of standards that are available to be certified in, and we are certified in all three. With regards to us achieving these standards, we didn't have to change the way we do business. We just showed them how we do business and we met all requirements provided by the state. The most recent Group Four standard, although we just received our Group Three certification, Group Four, which is vehicle pursuits, became a standard after our recertification process. And Captain Przynski, this week, we are gathering all the documentation now, will be submitting for Group Four standards, although we're not required to meet those until our next recertification period. So I have every expectation that we will be Group Four certified as well here in the matter of the next month or so. Any questions about the Ohio Collaborative?
Did we pass these standards even before we were mandated to pass these standards?
Yeah, each standard has a compliance checklist. And for you to achieve certification, let's say in a bias-free policing, you have to engage in certain practices, whether that's reporting, whether that's statistical data, whether that's policy compliance. And there's a compliance checklist that is associated with each specific standard statement. And you provide documents of proof such as your policy, training records, reporting records, reviews of whatever that standard says. So each, you know, let's say for bias policing, you have standard 1.1. A, 1.2. A. You have to show a compliance document for every, every standard within whatever the overall standard you're trying to achieve. The Oakwood Citizens Police Academy, just want to conclude with this. It's that time of year again for us. This is our third Citizens Police Academy. So in September, we will begin our, we will host our third Citizens Police Academy. This is more of a shameless plug to the community. This is a, this is a great program. We're very excited to offer it. I think if you would talk to anybody who participated over the last two years, I think they enjoy learning a little bit about who we are, what we do, and the services we provide. This year, the CPA will run from September 9th through November 11th. It will last 10 weeks. We will meet one night a week for approximately two hours, 6:30 to 8:45 at night, and we'll cover a variety of topics to include our department introduction, orientation, patrol operations, traffic enforcement, use of force, active shooter, evidence collection and processing. And because we're unique with what we do on the fire side, we also throw in some fire prevention and education. One thing I want to say is due to COVID, we're going to limit the class size to eight participants. So we're reducing it by a third. It's usually 12, but to make sure that we have a proper space if we're using any equipment and we need to properly sanitize the equipment as we get involved, you know, with active scenarios, we just want to make sure that we're able to accommodate the class with appropriate social distancing measures. So due to COVID-19, we will be limiting it to the first eight applications received. And we will begin accepting applications on this Thursday, July 23rd. Tomorrow, the application and the announcement will be posted on the city website. And on Wednesday, we should be seeing also an advertisement in the Oakwood Register as well for the CPA. It is free of charge and it is open to any Oakwood resident or individual working within the city of Oakwood. Any questions?
Questions for the chief? Is this presentation going to be put on our website, your PowerPoint? Is it already on there or? We can get that on there? I think that would be very helpful for the folks at home that would want to read some of those slides in more detail. Do you have anything? I just think that, you know, we've said, we've been saying here for a long time, we've got the best public safety department we've probably ever had in the history of Oakwood. They provide outstanding service and the fact that they're cross-trained in all three disciplines is just so unique. And so I think our citizens need to be somewhat wary of one-size-fits-all standards coming out of Columbus because we are, we are unique. And frankly, we're better. And maybe the people in Columbus ought to take some of the things that we're doing and apply those statewide as opposed to trying to push something down on us that we've already been doing a very fine job for a very long time. So as you know, it's not just you, it's your whole staff, but I mean, please let them know that, you know, everyone on council really appreciates the efforts that they deal with on a daily basis, especially in these troubled times. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now time for our city managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few quick things. As you'll recall, back on June 1st, we reopened our public facilities. They'd been closed for about 11 weeks before that. On June 6th, we opened Gardner Pool, and on June 15th, we opened the Health Center at the OCC. And I can report tonight that everything is functioning properly and in compliance with the Ohio Department of Health guidelines, any supplemental guidelines we'd get here locally from Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County. And we have not had any incidents here. The, I want to do a shout out to the court. I mean, the Oakwood Court has, is, is small but mighty. We have, of course, the elected judge, and we have clerk of courts and the deputy clerk of courts. And those three ladies run the court operation here and have done a wonderful job pretty much exclusively on Thursdays, which is court day here in Oakwood, in keeping things going and doing so in a safe manner. I did ask one of the clerks last Thursday if there's been any problem or issue with citizens coming in the building here without masks on, and she said there have been none. And so I guess I want to compliment all the folks that come into the building as well. You know, when I think about the city building now under this countywide mask order, it's really, I can liken it to a Dorothy Lee Marketer or Kroger where we have customers that come in and they interact with somebody and then they leave. And, you know, we require masks to be worn when you come in, when you leave, and if there isn't direct interaction with a city employee. For our employees themselves, I know you're all familiar with the exemption, those in offices don't, aren't wearing their face masks. But when you're going from your office to the copy machine, office to the restroom, office to the coffee machine, whatever, in and out of the building, we all are wearing our masks. So we're doing everything by the book, so to speak, here, and things are working well. The OCC is running as many programs as they can under the limitations that are out there. And I want to commend Carol Collins and her staff again for being creative and, you know, they have smaller groups, as you might imagine, than they would typically have for different classes and programs, but we're trying to keep as much of that stuff going as we can. The last time I spoke to you, I reported that we, to date, had had one city employee that tested positive for the virus and were planning to recognize safety officer Steve Norris for the plasma donation primarily when we meet here again on September 21st. But he was the first. He was, he actually became ill back in March, but it was a short illness. Within two days, he felt better. Third day, I think he was ready to come back to work, which of course he didn't. But he is fully recovered and has done a great job for us, you know, last few months again since then. But we had a second incident about three weeks ago where a public works employee had been exposed to somebody that tested positive, you know, after, he learned that afterwards, of course. And so we immediately had him tested and he had no symptoms, never developed any, remained fully healthy, but did get a positive result back. And unfortunately, that, then we did our own little local here contact tracing and we identified six other employees that he had been close to the one day that he was here working before we knew of the positive from the friend that he had, he had been with. And so for a 14-day period, we had a total of seven employees that were not here working. And so I mentioned that simply to highlight the impact of this thing. And, you know, we talked then, of course, about doing everything possible to keep the separation of our employees so as to minimize, you know, having to put folks on a 14-day quarantine if this should happen again. And I'll also say that in the weekly conference calls that I have with, with a whole bunch of city managers in the region here, two or three months ago, nearly no one had a case. I think our case was probably the first in the region with PSO Norris. But as the weeks go on here, more and more cities and townships and all in the region have one or two employees that have been exposed and have tested positive. But as, based on everything I've heard on these calls, everyone has recovered and been back to work. So that's a quick update on that. We are able to continue providing all of our essential services. Quick comment about the storm that came through yesterday through Oakwood. Depending on where you lived, it was more intense or less intense, but just in Oakwood. But we had a number of trees, several trees that went down, a number of branches that went down. Just one or two minor power outages, not a, not a big deal on the power thing, but just I want to compliment the Public Works Department for handling that. And two more things, the construction projects, we have just about two weeks left on the sidewalk curb and apron project, the northeast quadrant of town. Last week, the annual asphalt repaving project was completed between a Monday and Friday. If you, if you like new asphalt streets, I recommend you drive Delane Avenue. It's beautiful. And Vectren is continuing, they're working, has been reported in our city newsletter in three different areas of Oakwood, and it's an extensive project this year. Just today, they closed, Vectren did, or Miller Pipeline, northbound Oakwood Avenue between Five Points and East Shance. So there's a three-block section there of Oakwood Avenue where you can only go southbound. And that closure will extend through this week and probably into early next week. And this is for gas line, gas main replacement work. And my last comment is a thank you to Lori for her, all her talents. You know, the phone-in thing today, she completely figured that out and she makes my life very easy. You know, we, we had planned to have this meeting at the OCC, and so Lori did a whole bunch of work making sure all the technology and everything was set there. And then last week, we had to change that. And all I need to do is ask her to do something and then I can forget about it. And she makes it work. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none, we will then go to council comments. Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
All righty. Councilmember Stevens?
Just something real quick. I just want to thank Chief Hill, not only for the wonderful presentation, but also, you know, for leading our police department, our public safety department. As council committee chair for our public safety officers, I study that. That's the one thing I mainly focus on. And, you know, I could say how great it is now compared to past years, but I just think it's always been good. And the thing that I always look for, and it continues to happen, is that, you know, I really appreciate what you guys do. Of course, being on council now in 12 years, I've learned so much more than what you did than being just a youth, a teenager, an adult, you know, I just learn new stuff every day. And, you know, I want you to know that as a citizen, council member, business owner, longtime Oakwood resident, I appreciate what you and your officers do. And keep doing your job because you're protecting our families, our businesses, and our properties, and that is what you're here to do. It's that simple. Just keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Biden.
Yeah, I'll second that same comment. I'll say that I was really appreciative of getting a copy of the actual police policy. I'm embarrassed to say that in the 14 years I've been in council, I've never sat down and read it cover to cover. I've always kind of picked and chose what I was interested in, but with all the things that have been going on, I actually sat down and read through everything, the whole hostage negotiation and all the kind of stuff that's in there. But, you know, from bias sensitivity training to all the different things that are applicable in the daily job that you do in terms of de-escalation, I think that it's a very valuable document. I was particularly impressed with the code of ethics portion at the very beginning. I think that if you read that, I think it just basically sums up the, the character of all the officers that we have. And so I second Councilmember Stevens' comments there. I also want to thank all the folks who called in today. I know that this is a topic that is very contentious in some regards, and people are very passionate about it. I think that a lot of good things were said during that, those calls. I will say that it does sound like all of those folks are in college right now. And one of the things I remember from college, one of the professors always would tell me that if, if you develop a hypothesis or some way of thinking about something, you better be sure that you have the research method to back up the conclusions that you make on that particular hypothesis. The ABLE report is thrown out there quite a bit, and that's something that I hope that the people who are in college right now will learn, that it's important that just making a statement doesn't make something a report. You have to have the facts behind it. And so I hope that they learn that while they're in school. And I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you. David McCullough is an American historian and author of The Pioneers. It tells the story of the first settlers in Ohio and the Northwest Territory in the late 1700s and early 1800s. This book should be required reading in our public schools. You know, when the Declaration of Independence was signed, there were slaves in all 13 colonies. And in 1787, the Northwest Ordinance was passed by the Congress. And the Northwest Ordinance and the Northwest Territory now consists of Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, Wisconsin, and Illinois. It was the first document that prohibited slavery in any territory in the United States of America. And it was also the first document that required free public education in anywhere in the United States of America. This book should be required reading in our public schools. But in 2019, he talked about his book at an event in Columbus, Ohio. Governor DeWine, Governor Strickland, and Governor Taft all were in attendance. He closed his talk with an excerpt from a speech he gave at Ohio University in 2004. He was the commencement speaker. Ohio University was the first public university west of the Allegheny Mountains. It's important now as it was then, I will close with this, with his closing. "When bad news is riding high and despair in fashion, when loud mouths and corruption seem to own center stage, when some keep crying..." seem to own center stage, when some keep crying that the country is going to the dogs, remember, it's always been going to the dogs in the eyes of some, and that 90% or more of the people are good people, generous-hearted, law-abiding, good citizens who get to work on time, do a good job, love their country, pay their taxes, care about their neighbors, care about their children's education, and believe rightly, as you do, in the ideals upon our way of life was founded. Thank you for listening to this event, and our next meeting will be on September 21st, 2020. We are adjourned.